Want to pack it?
We're recording now. Oh, we printed five, there are some people that all five, I already read it.
Yeah, do we need more?
No, we've read it too.
Alright, I'm recording whenever though, Jerry.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to an order, the Bath Township Planning Commission. It's Tuesday, October the fourteenth, and it's about six o'clock.
Do you approve the agenda as submitted?
Support. Those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, hearing none? Anyone have a disclosure of interest they want to share with us? Hearing none? There's no public present? Minutes of the September ninth meeting?
You want to approve?
Have one correction?
Yeah.
Brett was here in spirit, but not in actuality.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it, Miles?
Do you have him? I got him, he's absent on this call.
He's off since he's both present and absent.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
So do you want to restate your motion to approve the minutes?
Friendly amendment.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you.
Thank you, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, let's move on, Miles, communication?
Yep, I believe we got one, let me make sure it got included, yep. We just got a notice from Williamson Township that they are engaging in the process of master planning. So, the whole thing is here included, the whole public notice is here including the fact that if you have any questions, let me know. But basically, just keep it on your radar as they send more information, you know, we'll pass that out.
Is there any reason to believe that would affect us in any way?
No, I honestly, they're a little bit far from us, I don't think they're gonna be required to send it to us.
They're not even adjacent, are they?
Yeah, typically you only send to communities that you're required by the plan enabling that to send to communities that are adjacent to you.
Right, right.
Did they touch like corners?
They don't even touch, yeah, they don't, I mean, their county touches our county.
Right, but they, they're.
It's rough for us over here in Bath because we touched, you know, two different counties, many different municipalities. And we send our notice, we gotta send it to like, I think the list is like twelve different municipalities.
Yeah, there's quite a few. Okay, old business? Miles, you wanna go ahead with the articles?
Yeah, um, so I did wanna point out, typically, we would have this, we're trying something new. So I definitely, you guys, I think, um, we're just bringing this back for no reason. But it seemed like everyone was fine with the renumbering article last time, we just wanted to verify that that is the case. What we're trying to do is because our noticing costs at the newspaper are so much, so per, I would say, each public hearing that we notice, it's two hundred dollars a notice. We have three ordinancees here that are all kinda in the works, we're hoping to give all three of these kind of a last look, and then do one notice for three public hearings, which would cost two hundred dollars instead of three notices, that's six hundred dollars. So we're trying to save some money, so that's why this is happening the way it's happening.
Yep.
But, um, this is the renumbering, all of this is fixing is, like I said last time, typically, you know, equating zoning ordinance, equating zonings, the type of zoning we use here at Bath Township, um, the other popular zoning is formed based on which many of you are probably familiar with. But with equating zoning, um, there's typically a standard organization of the zoning ordinance, and this article is happening about out of that typical organization. So we just wanna bump it up to its other similar sections, and then bump everything behind it down one level. So that's all that we're trying to do there, and that's why there's a section two showing all of these different articles getting renumbered. We'll work, instead of renumbering all other subsequent like subsections, we are just gonna display it like this, and then we'll communicate to UNICODE what the intent is so they don't get confused.
Are you seeking action on this?
We're not, because we still have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
But we just wanna make sure again that's cool before we go ahead with noticing the public hearing.
It's cool.
Okay.
I think that renumbering makes a lot of sense, since they did this, I read through the whole landscape ordinance. Sometime we get time, we need to go through this thing and clarify it.
The chair said the same thing, I know.
There's a lot of things in here that just don't make sense.
Well, I know I've talked to Commissioner Almar Eji too about like the approved tree lists in the past, so.
Yeah, is it working?
There is one, it just is not where it should be, which is in ordinance. It's in the share drive, in the end drive, and I, and it's confusing to me. And one of my conversations with Chris Patterson, who was with Eddie Schultz, when I first got here, we were looking through the order, I was like, hey man, can you just give me like a lowdown on areas where you are concerned about with the ordinance, and areas where your ordinance is strong? One of the first things he identified was approved tree list, and how he was concerned about how he couldn't see the approved tree list.
We did that intentionally because we wanted the flexibility of amending the tree list without amending the ordinance.
Correct.
And I remember us talking about that, and I think, I, yeah, like it's, that's good in intention, I can totally see where that's coming from. But in terms of like enforceability, it's problematic, so it's like that, those pros and cons. So, again, we can even get, if we move forward to do this, we can even get a statement from him, like maybe looking at other ways where we could easily change something up, or maybe spelling out in the ordinance, like the planning commission has the ability to change this via some other outside process, but it's gotta be made clear to the public in the ordinance what that is.
So the zoning map sits as a separate document on the website, right? Couldn't that serve as a model for the official treaty?
That, and I, that would be an example of, I think it's Article Four in our ordinance calls out the zoning map, and then explains the zoning map shall be publicly available on the website. So I think if the ordinance said like, there is a tree list, it will be publicly available in this location, then sure.
Yeah.
And that would probably be like one of those suggestions to bring up. So, but yeah, I think everyone's in agreement that there needs to be some cleaning up in that one, so maybe that.
Just clarify definitions or stuff like that.
Yeah, there's number of.
Yeah, like the tree line, if you look at the definition of that, it's not consistent. Sometimes, you know, sometimes it's a right away line, sometimes it's a curb line, sometimes it's a gutter line.
Yeah.
It's gotta be one or the other.
Yeah, it can be both, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's several different areas that need to be addressed.
Cool, yeah, I mean, it's something I've already had, after talking to Jared, talking to Jason, you know, like this is like six months or something. It's something that we've already put on a work plan, you know, but we'll ratify our work plan in January. Okay, so moving on then?
Yep, let's move on to the rental.
Alright, I'm gonna keep it over to Ally for this one, if that's okay with everybody, because she did a lot of the heavy lifting for this report.
I just wanna say, I read through this whole thing, and I thought it was really well done.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, it was clear, I started the questions, but it was really well done.
I second that.
Getting off daddy.
We want your guys' input on this for sure. So, like you guys said, if you were to look at it before, it's basically just outlining like the intent of why we wanna have a rental ordinance, the legal justification, and then it goes a little bit further into how different, how their communities have done it. So, Meridian's done one, East Lansing has one, and a couple other places throughout the state. So they all function a little bit differently, some of them have people come in to get a license, and then they go out and inspect, or other people just have them like register as rental properties. So then we went through and we highlighted the best practices that we got, like from the other communities. So, we kind of pulled out like how tier inspections might be beneficial. So like if you have, fall into a different category, like a different number of units, then it might be more beneficial to regulate you differently than, let's say, like an individual homeowner. Or it's kind of benefit or reward people for acting in good nature, like keeping up with standards and everything, as well as having triggered rolling inspections, so like every year or whatever, as well as based on complaints. So, those are just a few of the things that we pulled out from the comparable communities. Then we delved into a little bit like the different dials that you guys can manipulate, which is what we want your guys' input on. Like, how much regulation are we really looking to get from this ordinance? Who do we wanna regulate? And how often do we wanna inspect them and make sure that they're doing what they said they're gonna do? So we outlined a couple of different categories and avenues that you guys can take for that regulation, but ultimately, it's up to you. If you guys wanna see, we outlined, um, you can regulate based on how many units there are on a property. So we highlighted commercial, so that'd be whatever number, a large number of units on one property or one parcel. Is, and you can dial that all the way back to like a singular house, like we were saying, as well as how often you inspect them.
Quick comments about the comparable communities. I don't, I don't think there was, I didn't have, I, I think I, my impression was that two of the communities were based on proximity. The question is, what was the basis for Allendale?
Allendale, it's, they have Grand Valley up there in close proximity to them, so they're kind of a similar situation with East Lansing here being like they rent a lot of students. And Marquette was more, they're more rural in character, you could say. So the way that their process function would be more similar to how I could foresee it happening here, like with just the resources that they have available.
Like, oh, even though they're far bigger with their housing stock, and at least in their periphery is similar to our housing stock.
So I would, I would include, I mean, I don't think it's necessary for this one, but like, you know, future reference, someone may say, you know, how were the communities selected? The rationale you gave, I think, is perfect, and so, you know, including that within, sort of, the methodology of the selection process would be helpful.
So, yeah, we kinda talked last time, and it, I guess like our staff impression of it was, there's, there's two dials that we talked about last time. The whole point of Ally really helping us out and put all of this, these thoughts kind of onto paper is, you know, it's just good to organize where we're coming, where we're coming from with some of the information we're bringing to you guys. And this just puts in a way where people know we've thought about it, and we're not just like trying to make this stuff up and bring it to you. And also, it helps us think about where we're headed. The two dials, one of which is who to regulate, right? And then, once we determine who to regulate, it's like, well, how do you regulate them? So, we'll go more into those dials, but I'll say, before going to that and talks with administration about this venture that we're going through right now, it's becoming apparent that even in the situation of like, let's say, we go on the maximal end of who to regulate, and we say like, we're only gonna regulate the biggest actors in the township, and then we're gonna regulate them the least amount possible. So that's kind of like, but let's just assume those two things. I still don't see a way in terms of administering the ordinance where that doesn't require the township to hire a part-time person to like actually do some of that work.
I mean, you mentioned in it's option of contracting the work out.
Yeah, yeah, that's true too, and that's another thing we discussed is amending our contract with AGS, and so.
Or a different contractor.
Yeah, or a different contractor, sure. So definitely some options there, but it, I don't think the answer to it will be, will like, well, the fire, like the code enforcement officer can obviously just implement the program, like they can.
You still have to expand.
Yeah, well, he would have to expand, we would need a assistant or something, or again, a subcontractor or something would have to come in. So with that being said, in my talks with administration today, basically, they're like, let's have the conversation with the planning commission tonight, get it, try to at least build some kind of consensus on the direction the planning commission feels is appropriate here. And then, like we, you know, she has the superintendent has, I would say, five weekly meetings with the supervisor, or they just talk about township business and whatever supervisors and superintendents talk about. I was gonna join that meeting next time it comes around, speak with Ryan about it, and more likely, probably gonna go to the board and say like, hey, this is where the planning commission's at, this is kind of what we're thinking, all of these options require a lot of work. What's your thoughts before we actually start writing the ordinance? Because if we get there and their thoughts are like, like, and you know what's happened with the Airbnbs, or it's like, no, we're like, thank God we did that, cuz that just saved us like six months of time. But, in my preliminary conversation with board members, I mean, I guess including Kate here, who's a board representative of the planning commission, it does seem like there's still not a very hungry appetite for Airbnbs, cuz that's just not something where most of the perception or, and probably the reality is, that's a major cost benefit analysis to the township, but there is more of a perception amongst the current board that renting is a thing that's starting to affect the township at some scale. So.
So did we look at like about how many properties each category would capture?
We will look at that, that's something you guys talked about last time, but we want, again, that, even that is like, you know, that's a pretty.
I would think so.
Yeah, that's gonna take like some serious work to do, and I, I think it's something that we can't easily do, but, um.
Do we even know, like if none of our, if they haven't had to register, or?
We could get a, for the commercial ones, we for sure get a rough idea. And then in terms of the duplexes and up, we can get those from the building permits. But in terms of like single-family homes that are acting as renters, those are the, that's like the wild card. Like, it's gonna be hard to determine that.
But even duplexes, there are a lot of duplexes that are not rented.
What, you mean like they're owned?
Yeah, look at Rock Hollow, there's all kinds of duplexes out there that are single-family homes.
You mean, like the cottages version?
Cottages and houses.
So we actually, those building permits are attached condos. So like, um, the duplex that went in next to Meek Creek recently, if you saw that one, it's a very skinny lot.
They had that gas leak last year.
On Meek Creek.
Yeah.
That got, that's, that structure's building permit was pulled as a straight duplex. Or like the house that's being renovated on, um, Main and High, that building permit was pulled as a duplex. So there is a code in the building permits where duplexes get pulled, and then there's codes for attached condos.
Now, the duplex still could still be owned by two different people?
It could be owned by two different people, and that's why, you know, it would be, with the non-commercial ones, the best we can do is estimates.
So, I mean, you know who the property owner is for homes, right? So, look at the names outside of trust, I guess, or something like that.
Yeah.
And then you can, I'm assuming you can get access to mailing addresses, names with mailing addresses through the post office?
We would probably try to see how, we would probably work with assessing and see personal property exemptions, I think would be the easiest way.
Yeah.
But there are ways, I mean, there are multiple methodologies where we could get a decent estimate. I really just think the single-family ones would just be the wild card, cuz even like with the duplex, it's hard to know if like, somebody has a single-family home and they're renting their basement, for example, like that, it's just gonna be hard to flag that stuff. And even once, we were talking today, if even once this ordinance is implemented, let's say the ordinance goes to the maximal option of like the other end of the spectrum, where it's single-family homes and up, so any rental in the township, and, um, we are noticing and we're saying, everybody is getting an inspection at one year, and then from there, you know, that it can play out, there are many ways to go from there. But everyone gets that first inspection, once you secure your license. I guarantee this program will be three years into operation, and we'll come across a listing. Uh, rental is opening up on Slate Road, I'm renting out my basement, and we'll see it, and we'll be like, oh, I don't have a license. And we'll have to reach out, and then we'll just say, hey, I don't know if you're aware, but, you know, you actually have a license to, you know, operate as a rental in Bath Township, you have thirty days to gain one. So, but with all of that being said, the real questions are, and we kind of put down, I think at one point here, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, the staff thoughts.
Um, I think it's, uh, the project we called, um, examples?
Yeah. So, um, our thoughts alluded to, I mean, we're planners by nature, so I think it's fair to say like, it's probably wise to say like, we always have some level of bias when it comes to like regulation, because like people that go into planning, don't go into planning cuz we're like agents of chaos, like we like order, we like order our rules and things, so I, I always, when my opinion gets in involved, I always like to say disclaimer of like, I'm saying an opinion now, and my opinion is that rentals can be a tenuous thing, and regulating those rentals can have benefits in the short and long run, and create a more fair marketplace. So I'm obviously in favor of, and this again is my opinion, I'm in favor of more of, hey, if you're operating a rental, you have a license. The one example recently that I can point to that was kind of interesting is me and Beth had a meeting with somebody that was looking to build apartment complexes in Bath Township, and they were looking at, the project never went through, so I can talk about it now, but they were looking at this site here, and we had a pre-application meeting, and it was kind of interesting because they wanted to demo all of these, and it wasn't a very big development, I think it was gonna be something like forty units at the end of the day, which isn't huge, but it's obviously more than there, than what's there right now. And one of their first questions, interesting, was, do you guys have a rental ordinance? And we said no, and we kind of thought like that would help the sell of like, yeah, you should locate here versus Meridian. And they actually were like, oh, that, and again, like this is, I'm trying to be honest about how this conversation went, and it was unprompted from us, they were like, oh, that's not ideal for us. And I was like, why? And now, they would obviously be, they're, this is in the commercial vein anyway, so it doesn't really help with the single-family versus commercial dilemma that the planning commission finds themselves in here. But, the reason, the rationale they gave is like, well, you know, our business model, our methodology is like, we wanna do everything by the book, and it actually sucks for us to come and operate in a community that doesn't have a rental ordinance in place, cuz that means like our competition is gonna be people that are able to cut corners, and since we know we're not gonna cut corners, then they're probably gonna be able to beat our monthly rates, and thus like we're not as competitive. So they're like, we actually prefer to operate in a community where we know everybody's on the same playing field. So I found that interesting, cuz there's not too many times in, like, there's not too many industries I engage with where they're like, no, please regulate, you know? But I was like, that's interesting, so obviously I took a no, and this is probably about six months back now. And who knows, there could have been other factors of why they didn't locate, obviously, commercial insurance rates for construction are not helping anybody right now. But yeah, so that's thing number one. So I know you guys wanna play that one out, and then we can move on to how to regulate, or if you wanna go over how to regulate options and what we're thinking.
I like the idea of preliminary inspections for everybody at some point, and then kind of like that reward-based where if it's a good inspection, you checked all, you're following all the rules, then maybe you're off the list for however long.
Yeah.
That gets you a break from being inspected.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in the list of communities we get here, but what we saw when we were looking through how other places did it was, so they had their initial one-year inspection. Cuz you have to, whenever the ordinance actually launches, one thing you have to remember too, is like, this is gonna be new, and it's gonna catch everyone kind of off guard, and the municipality needs time to like get our ducks in a row. So like, let's say that, let's say that the board passes this in January, right? So we would say, okay, January twenty twenty-six, this passes, and January twenty twenty-seven, your all initial inspection shall start taking place. That gives us a year as a municipality, notice everybody, and we have to do certified mailing and notices again too. So if somebody says like, you didn't tell me, we may know, yeah, we did. And that takes time and money and resources. But then that initial inspection happens, if they pass the initial inspection, no reinspection needed, their next inspection is three years. If three years goes by, and they pass that three-year inspection, their next inspection is five years. And five years to live, right? So after that, five years, if everything's still good, five years from then. Now, if they have their one year, and then they have their three year, and at three years, like mold's found and the floor's rotting, they get a reinspection, they're back to square one, next inspection is a year from, you know?
I like that, I like that idea. I think it gives, offers a good balance to the workload, because that's fewer inspections.
Yeah, so it's less time and one area you're going to run.
And then it offers, you know, the incentive to the landlord to make sure that they're gonna pass that inspection, so they don't have, also fewer inspections, cuz inspections, I would imagine, are a pain for the landlord, because you have to coordinate when they're gonna happen, and probably have to pay for them, and.
Yeah, and yeah, depending on how our fees are structured, yeah, it might actually save you money.
I feel like incentivizing good property management is a good thing.
Yeah.
It's still complaint-driven for.
Yeah, and if a complaint comes in at any time, then obviously that supersedes.
Then they're kicked back to the year. If they have a complaint and they actually fail, the complaint is true, they would go back to the one year.
Yeah, so like, let's say they did their one year, they passed, now they're on their three year, we go in for that three year one? We find a problem?
Or you get a complaint at year?
Oh, yeah, if you get a complaint.
End of year one of that.
Yeah, you're back to a year, yeah.
So, the question I have is, what will trigger a failed inspection that would then reset the clock?
Well, there's gonna have to, that's a good question, but there, we were talking about this this morning, it's like, well, again, what does enforcement look like? I think what, and again, all this would get spelled out, and I think we're a little early, and you know, this is gonna have to be detailed, that's why this is, this is real work, this is a more complicated ordinance to write and administrate than what we typically engaged in, at least in my time here. So this, this would be similar, I'd say, in complexity of like when we did the marijuana ordinance. But, what we were discussing this morning with administration was, I think we'd only wanna focus on like health and safety things, so like if we come in, and let's say like.
No smoke detectors.
Yeah, no smoke detectors, that's a problem, no fire extinguisher, that's a problem, sub, hole in subfloor, that's a problem, you know? But if we came in, like, let's say, like, there's chipped paint, like, who cares? Let's even say like the drywall is significantly damaged, you know? I don't, I don't care about the drywall being damaged. So it's gotta be something that affects health and safety. And there's a million building codes, like is some, is the inspector coming in with a GFI tester and making sure all outlets have GFIs? I wouldn't say we're going that far. Like, are we going up into the attic to like look for, seeking out mold? Like, I would say no. Now, if the inspector does the walkthrough, right, like are we getting into crawl spaces and attics looking for building code violations? No, we're doing walkthroughs and checking for, now if we come in and during the walkthrough, entire wall in the bathroom has black mold, yeah, it's a problem.
What if it's just a corner? I mean, when you get into the details, are you gonna test for the type of mold? I mean.
I think we would have to, probably, if we go into.
So you have a two-by-two inch square that is mold, right?
No.
But then, it's a question of like, at what point is there a health and safety concern? And then judgment comes in, and then, then that fucks up the entire thing, because then you create situations where people just complain. That's not fair, I'm gonna challenge you, I'm gonna sue you, cuz that unit, by a different owner, got approved with a three-inch spot of mold, but my, you know, four-inch.
Yeah, no, I understand, but that, though, the same thing you're talking about is the same problems like the building department faces now. You know, with any of the voting inspections we do, like, you're right, at the end of the day, like, calls have to be made, and that's why, you know, we would work, like, let's say, if it ends up being the code enforcement slash fire marshal's office is, you know, who ends up being responsible for this, and we need to take one of the recently hired full-time firefighters and send them to a class to get certified to be a rental inspector, we'll send them, get the cert, and then they will have to use their judgment. And then the township is, we're on the books to defend it, you know? So like, if they make a call, and they make the wrong call, and we do get sued by the landlord, looks like we're going to court. But, I mean, yeah, that's something that can totally happen, right?
Well, I noticed in, let me see what it was, Marquette's thing. They have a way in here, so if a complaint is filed without a factual basis, the complainant may be cited for municipal infraction.
Yeah, I think that was interesting.
I think that's, you know, it's a problem.
To eliminate just the issues.
That just wasn't nasty.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think I agree with that too, that's something similar to the fire department right now, they're looking at, um, cuz we're, obviously, the board has been talking about budget and the expenses of fire trucks a lot, and the new fire chief is trying to figure out, you know, how, he comes from East Lansing, he's been looking at something, and one of the things Ben was telling me that they were looking at was, one of their big problems with the apartments, especially in the summer, is people just like pulling fire alarms. One of their big problems with the apartments, especially in the summer, is people just like pulling fire alarms and running away. And then the, the galvanizing the whole, you know, staff to rush to the fire. And the township in the past, I guess, has just been eating that cost, so now they're looking at charging. For these false alarms, similar concept, it's like, well, dude, you just wasted like three hours of staff time, you know, somebody's paying for this.
Swatting calls, whatever.
Yeah. So, I mean, there are ways, we're gonna have to think, that's why this is gonna be a difficult ordinance and we're really gonna have to think through, but I think the high level stuff right now. So it does sound like if we have consensus on, everyone likes some of the incentives in terms of how to regulate.
I don't.
Okay, what do you like?
Well, I, 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 I think uniformity, uh, is gonna be easier to, uh, administer.
So like, one year then?
Like every house every year?
I, no, I, I think the challenge is when you create an incentive system. You, you have, you put an overlay of fairness, right, and then that creates opportunities for people to complain. And so, whereas if you do, uh, initial inspection and then every three years.
That's what, and if you do initial and then every three years is what we typically see.
Yeah, uh, then, then it's just, it, it becomes an expectation and landlords will accommodate that, right? And so, is it a burden? I don't know, I mean, I. The staffing issue, uh, of whether or not Beth can handle it, that's a persistent issue that is not resolved. This one I just see as, this is contracted out to a certified home inspector, uh, you know, one or more. Uh, companies, uh, to just manage it, I'm su- assuming they have cost models and then you just build those costs into what the, the property owner pays.
Exactly, I was gonna say, the good thing about this system is, at least in theory, is this ordinance. And this regulatory burden should, in a sense, pay for itself. Cause whatever our expense is gonna be, if you're hiring someone or contracting out or mending our contract with AGS. We will calculate what that will cost us, and then we'll say, all right, how roughly, how many dwellings per rentals do we have in the township? Okay, this is how much a permit's gonna have to cost, or a rental license.
Interesting note, because Meridian's charges, uh, East Lansing charges are far different.
Okay.
How close are they each coming to making a paper itself system?
Yeah, it really depends, I couldn't find anything based on like if they're contracting out. Or like, they're not obviously gonna share their finances online probably. Yeah.
We'd have to probably dive into the budget.
Where requested.
Or just request it. Make the call and see if they'll give it to you, that should not, why would they not share with you? What's going on, because, you know, you're not really their competition today.
Cause they're making money and they don't wanna disclose how much money they're making.
I, I do think though, like, let's say we end up, let's say that we had this conversation tonight, we go to the board. There's openness and willingness to move, at least move forward. One thing we could do is we could reach out to Meridian's rental enforcement officer or rental enforcement consultant and. Um, say, hey, this is something Beth's thinking about, would you mind coming to our planning commission meeting? And talking to us about like the nuances of administering this, just so we can all get an idea of how they do it and then help inform us on how to regulate the ordinance. And it's totally something, we can do probably something that would be wise.
I hope the complaints they're getting and, you know, it's their whole operation.
Yeah. And I think as time goes, it does just start to become like, there are, one benefit on that I can see. On like, uh, the argument that Jason was making for like do the one year and then the three years. It does start to become like clockwork because it's a standard time, so they are expecting it. Where with the, the one year, then the three year, then back to the one year, then three year, then five year. Even though it's less staff driving around trips in terms of like setting their calendar. And actually a ministry in the inspections, it's not as much, it's just like steady clockwork. Cause we have to think about that too, we're probably gonna use BSNA, the inspector's probably gonna have to build a complicated calendar. Um, for inspections for all this, which is how the voting department operates now, I mean. Again, there's like a whole system that's very complicated on how we actually get all of these inspections administered every day. And there's software that helps us do that, it's not like, we're not just like, there's no spreadsheet that does this, we have. A BSNA program that figures it all out.
But when you first start too, you're gonna, every, everyone's gonna be on the same schedule, it'd be nice a few years in where that.
Starts.
Inspection starts to spread out a little bit, so you're not doing everything at the same time.
That's true, and maybe, I mean, that might have be something where a call would have to be made at some point where like.
At the beginning that you're going to do it in.
We would have to do quadrants, we'd probably divide the township like, let's say into like four quadrants and then, cause I do think that's how Meridian does, is they have quadrants and then. Each quadrant's done on a rolling basis. But again, we're kinda getting into the nuances of like actually administering the ordinance, which maybe isn't appropriate right now, like.
My feeling is just, I'm sort of coming from the perspective of, of safety, of ensuring that. The residences are safe to live in for the people who are paying money to live there. And that the landlords are maintaining them to a minimal reasonable standard. Um, not necessarily inspec- inspections just for the sake of inspections.
Yeah.
Um, in, in my mind, that's where my perspective is coming from, is just ensuring that, um, it's a safe dwelling to live in.
Yeah, and there's a lot of nuance in that, I think that, again, like even. The dialogue between like, let's say like the Kate method and the Jason method here is. Like, you're at one year and then three year and then five year, and then maybe you go back to three year and then, you know, then you fail again, you go back to one year. And then Jason's at, do the one year and then just, it's three years every year after that, it doesn't matter good or bad. I mean, there's even nuance of like, okay, well, you don't want more inspections, so. But you wanna make sure that things are s- safe, so if three years feels too often. You know, you could always just take it, do that one year, keep it complaint only. And, but, you know, bump it to five years, so it's not such a burden.
Does it kinda de- depend on the dwelling itself, so let's say I'm a landlord and I have a house that I run out to a family. And, uh, you come in the first year, everything's fine, you come in and, cause this is what I've had happen.
Okay.
Is, the next year they come out and inspect, they find something, the next year you find, next, you didn't do nothing to the house, the next year they find something again. So, you know, depending on who the inspectors and stuff, it could, if you're doing that variable, if you have a variable.
Yeah.
They, they would make me do stuff that was just like totally ridiculous, and I don't, I wouldn't want someone to go through that. But you also have to have the ability to, like we have problems now. And the quadrant, quadrant over there.
Yeah.
You have to have the ability to, to manage that.
Yeah, you want some.
From, from the planning department, yes.
Yeah, I think that's the part where we have to, as Jason was kinda saying, like, it will be important in the ordinance to spell out, or. It, it could even be like in a accompanying policy that like both travel together where the ordinance gets approved, but like a policy gets approved by the board at the same time. Where the policy really sets the tone of like how inspections are supposed to be like, where they're dictating to the inspector, okay, this is about health, safety and welfare, like. We do not need you going in and being like, oh, well, your railing is four inches short, so I need you to like rip off the railing.
And I think there's a difference between like a commercial rental property, like the big student housing apartment complexes. Versus, uh, somebody, you know, I inherited this house and I don't wanna sell it, so I'm gonna rent it out. And then the same family ends up renting it for ten years or something like that. There's, there's a lot of difference between that situation and the student housing situation, yeah, those honestly probably should be inspected every year. Like, you're just in that for a year, and that's it, versus a, you know, a different one, you got one tenant, one landlord. That's it, you know, they're not, I don't wanna use the term slumlord, but, you know, where you're, you're have, you know, multiple properties and. Stuff like that, so I think there's.
Like dwelling or commercial, you could say rental entities that are, uh, renting. To a capacity of like twenty dwelling units or greater are required per this ordinance to receive one rental inspection annually. And you could say, uh, rental entities under that threshold are required to receive a rental inspection every three years. So you're like, that, again, that's a totally conceivable thing.
So if I have a house and, uh, John goes back to school and stays with me and gives me a couple hundred bucks. A week for, to stay there, I have to come and get a rental inspection?
Is the house your principal residence?
Yes.
See, I think that's an area where there are some nuance there, I don't know if I would consider that a rental, I think you have a roommate.
I mean, and, and in reality, it is a rental, but is it, you know?
Is it?
Is it compared to?
Do you, you don't have an LLC set up for this rental?
No.
It doesn't sound like.
He's just staying with, like, if you were going back to college.
Sounds like a roommate to me, and by our definition.
I think, I think a rental, a rental would have to be, you got a kitchen and everything separate from where you're living.
Okay.
This is your principal residence, it sounds like you have a roommate, he's paying you cash under the table, there's not an LLC set up where you're paying taxes on this money you're receiving.
Well, even if you pay taxes on it.
It sounds like you're engaging in a functional, it sounds like you're engaging in a functional family.
And I think that's a good point to bring up, like, we'll have to define like what actually a rental unit is and like what constitutes a roommate or. Living family.
Yeah.
The other concern I got about complaint, if you haven't moved to a complaint only system, and it was brought up by one of these people, is that some people. Will be very hesitant to file a complaint because their landlord then is going to kick them out or, you know.
Well, that's why, I don't.
So they won't file a complaint.
Again, this is my, I'm in the realm of opinion, I don't like a complaint only system, I think if it builds bad inside instruction, I think if you move to a complaint only ordinance. I don't see there being as much reason to even engage in this process.
I agree.
Again, I think that di- there's a dial there, I'm like, I would be even, even open to like the one year inspection and then like the next one is literally like five years later. I think that is still better than a complaint only system, because at least, even though accountability is, let's say, lower than like a three year inspection. Uh, at least there is some regular accountability, it might not be on the timeframe that everybody would prefer, but. Every five years if something crazy's going on, we'll find out.
A lot can happen in five years.
A lot can happen, but well, as, as people that are in the rental game know, this is why a lot of people get out of the rental game, a lot can happen with one bad tenant.
Yeah.
Testify.
Yeah.
And it might not necessarily be, but again, if, let's say I am a landlord and I'm a, a good actor. Um. And I have, what, you know, let's say I, I have ten units, I'm not a big landlord. Uh, there are, uh, throughout the Lansing metro area, one of my tenants happens to be in Bat Township. And we're doing inspections every three years, they've got a new tenant in there, it just happens to be six months into their new tenant. That our three year cycle comes up, we go in and we're like, bro, there's no running water in your unit. Like, I don't know what's going on, but I think somebody poured concrete in the PVC plumbing.
That's happened.
It happens, like that, literally seen renters do that, when I lived in Flint, they were like, yeah, I actually hate my landlord, I just poured a bunch of concrete and then, yeah. And so. You know, but if I'm a landlord, I love that that got caught early, you know? Like, that's great news, because if it would've stayed a problem, let's say through winter, it could've been catastrophic.
But wouldn't that be called out by the complaint?
Well, take, with it, if your renter is the one causing this havoc, they're not complaining.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So there are, I mean, landlord drop's gonna be like, yeah, that's a good sell, but this is costing me money. I can, you're gonna see it both ways, some people are gonna be like, this is fine and I'm fine with operating in this system, this is how a lot of places operate. And then you're, I have people, this is burden, some of the government's putting me out of business, like, how can anybody operate in this environment? So I, you're definitely gonna get it both ways. And I think it's worth noting too, like, that it's very possible some of the larger entities, like Somerset, who's owned by Amp Realty, like, are not gonna be stoked. About this and come to the board and say like, we're actually thinking about closing in Bat Township if this goes through.
Well, they'll say that.
They'll say that.
That's fine.
Yeah, I, my personal belief is, I think we just have an obligation to make sure that there's safe living conditions in our township. And if you're following the rules that are in place by the state of Michigan, the health, safety rules, then no big deal, we're not looking to create a. A gotcha system.
Our planner, planner has to have.
But I think, yeah, I think that kind of middle of the road, reasonable, you know, we're not, we're not trying to.
Make money?
Yeah, we're not trying to make money, we're just trying to implement a system that's gonna be good for the residents of Bat Township.
Yeah, and with how many rentals we do have in the township, if let's say, it's like one employee is brought on, even if it's, let's say like. Maximal option, like, it's one employee and they're full time, like with benefits, with how many rentals we have in the township. I wouldn't, like, spreading that burden, even if the initial licensing and then let's say inspections every three years. Spreading that burden across each rental unit itself, I feel like the barriers to entry shouldn't be too high. But that's without doing any math.
So when they do these inspections, like the, the multi-unit student housing, do they go in every unit to do an inspection?
When we were doing our inspection, was, so when, I don't know if you guys remember, this was like a year or two ago, Bat Township got on the news. For an off positive thing over at the villages, there were really bad disrepair, and yeah, for about a year. Outside of this ordinance being even a thing, we worked with the voting department and the health department and we were. On a bi-monthly basis looking at every unit in there, and we did find a bunch of stuff that was crazy.
What was the authority for that?
Um, we used, that's why we had to work with the health department under their, um, authority to inspect. And we sent our voting inspector with the health department.
Now, does that incur a cost for the property owner to have the health department out there, like, if the health department finds you?
Find them, but we had no authority to find them, so even though we ended up making some revenue out of. The things we found and saying like, hey, you need to pull a mechanical permit for this, like, this HVAC system is not correctly hooked up, like. You need a plumbing permit for this, there is, there was like several units where there was like a major plumbing leak. And it was just multi-floor going through down to the first floor.
Well, I'm thinking that like our inspection process.
That way, but we were eating a lot of that cost.
But I'm thinking that our inspection process from the property owner's point of view is probably gonna be cheaper than paying fines to the health department.
Yeah.
Like, we would be, like, you know, if they're saying that this is gonna put them out of, out of business, well, if, if you're not following the rules. Then it could be way more expensive once the health department gets involved, so it's really better for everybody.
What if the inspection triggers a health department call?
Well, then that's certainly on the landlord. I mean, come on.
And the, and the, and the renter usually.
Right.
Cause they're the ones that are, that, not anyways.
But finding things early, you know, is obviously, I think, better, but like, even in the case of like that major plumbing break and then going through, it is interesting, cause. And again, since that time period, I think the villages has changed hands twice, which is like another kind of problem in this whole zeitgeist of like. Commercial rental, but, um. The staff there, with the management staff, who are essentially like these twenty and thirty year olds, you know? They knew about the problem, they showed us the emails of them trying to work with corporate to get an address and just being like, no, just cancel that ticket, cancel that ticket.
So, I, I mean, I brought this up last time, I mean, I think there's, I, you know, if we inspect all housing units, right? We're gonna, in that first go around, we're gonna find a whole bunch of places that probably are gonna need to be red tacked, right? Or that requires such extensive repairs that the homeowner may not have the resources to do that.
Could be the case.
I would argue that it would be, there would be significant numbers, and when I say significant, I'm not saying like hundreds, it's, you know, I'd say. A half a dozen in this community would be a significant number, right, cause now we have six families that are unhoused. And are we prepared for that?
Yeah, I could see like, off the top of my head, I can think of like. I don't know, a couple dozen, like, are you saying like twenty?
I, I have no idea, but I mean, you know, looking at.
Ten plumbing units, I could think of that, I think are gonna be problematic.
So, even with ten, I mean, how many, how many, how many children are involved in that?
Yeah, no, it would, again, like, no one likes to see how the sausage is made, right? Like, that's the thing, like, it's gonna.
But, I mean.
It's gonna be a real thing, that's what I'm trying to, I've been trying, and I think you're doing the same thing, which is like, yeah, this is gonna have an effect. It's gonna be just like the marijuana ordinance, where it's like, it has a real effect, like, in the built environment, it'll affect things.
I mean, down the road, I mean, maybe perhaps a, a part of this is, you know, forming an ad hoc committee, you know. I mean, down the road, I mean, maybe perhaps a part of this is, you know, forming an ad hoc committee, you know, of the township to identify social services that can be, you know, easily communicated and navigated uh, uh, for affected families when this goes live.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea either, but I also don't think it's a good idea to continue a situation where people are living in a red-tagged environment. Like, at some point, things will come to a head. I think we're maybe are accelerating that timeline a little bit, but I, I mean, at some point, something has to give.
Yeah, and it's also like, I mean, Kate, you know.
And these houses that we're thinking of, I don't know, I, we don't necessarily need to answer this question, but are they like, uh, a one-off landlord who truly, you know, just doesn't have the money to upgrade it? Or is it somebody who has multiple properties, who probably does have the money to put into it, but isn't?
I'd say it probably is a mix of both, but literally like the one that we're, I'm thinking of, but I'm, I'm not gonna say names, but like, it's a doctor and it's something we're doing with this week. Like, it's definitely in the latter category.
Yeah.
And it is one of those properties that, like, we're, we're all thinking about.
You know, that person's probably just, well, the township's let me get away with it for so long, so I'm just gonna keep getting away with it until I can.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know. I can't speak to that, but I would say, like, they're doing all right.
Right.
Um, so it's a little bit of both. There are probably situations where, like, yeah, there, I'm like, no, I'm just not, this is too high of a barrier to entry for me. I'm gonna go ahead and close up. I'm, I got this in the LLC. I'm gonna declare that bankruptcy in that LLC, close that down. I'll move up to Victor Township, open up another LLC and pop up shop there. Which when East Lansing, one of the problems, and this is why this is kind of coming to a head for us, one of the problems we have seen, and it's actually a gentleman in your neighborhood who I talked to that, um, we're having a conversation about this. He has rental properties right there on Chandler.
I think it'll be terrible.
One, one thing we've seen here about this, as East Lansing has really tightened up their approach to rentals, which I don't know if you guys, there's been news on this, but they're trying to incentivize like single-family homer- ownership and disincentivize, you know, these larger landlords within the municipalities. So there's all kinds of ways they're going about that. But what we've seen now in the periphery is like us, Grand ledge, DeWitt Township, some of these landlords have jumped from East Lansing, bought units in these areas, have opened up shop here. Which is another reason why this has accelerated us to move this up in our rankings. Okay, none of that, though, has answered. I think that's all good.
Repeat the question?
There's two dials. Who do we wanna regulate? How do we wanna regulate them? I'm hoping we can come to some kind of direction. So the first question is, who do we wanna regulate? Is it everybody?
I kinda like what you had, the long-term one, does not include the thirty day one, it's like the BB.
Yeah, I think when I say everybody, I'm excluding short-term rentals.
Yeah.
I'm excluding Virgos, Airbnbs, we're thinking thirty days or more.
I think everybody.
I think so too.
I guess the one exception I had thought of would be like, oh, what do we call it? Not mother-in-law apartment, but the mother-in-law apartment. Is, is that a rental?
Yeah, it's not a rental.
Okay.
We would define that as not a rental.
So it's like a family member living in, above your garage or whatever, like, yeah.
For that, but that will be defined.
So that was kind of the one exception that I was sort of thinking of.
My understanding can actually be a separate structure on your property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, you know, if it is like a direct family member or something, that, that I think is probably different.
I don't even say it.
It has to be a direct family member. It could just be someone.
I didn't see him.
He came down from above. I thought it was like.
All right, so anyways, all right, um.
But other than that, I think, yes, everybody, because then the, I think it's too hard to get into exceptions.
I don't need a vote, but like, obviously, we had some dialogue about that. Is that, is that something that I wouldn't, is that something I could take to the board and say, like, this is what the planning commission's thinking for now, until we do a superdive? Okay, um, all right, so then, all right, so now we know who we're regulating, or at least have some consensus. And again, I'm, no one's held to that. We will do all the analysis, as how many rentals we have, and that can inform the ultimate decision, right? At least it gives us something to say to the board. All right, the second dial is how to regulate them. So there's been a lot more discussion on that tonight. But I, I'm hearing from all parties that the initial inspection has to be done.
And staggered.
And, yeah, we are gonna have to do some kind of staggering, because the inspector can't be like, no work one year and then all the work is here.
Yeah.
But an initial inspection will occur. It'll be staggered, but it'll be sometime within a year of licensing being gained. And then after the initial inspection, what are we thinking? So there's pros and cons to a lot of these, and I guess there's even nuance. I guess I don't need a full answer, but we know that we, we don't wanna stop at the initial inspection, right? There's gotta be some kind of.
Three to five years and then?
Or three to five years somewhere in there. It will be decided, you know, as this process moves forward.
I like, I like the one where it's just a set three years. I think that'd be a lot easier to administer than the three, because if you, you start getting into the three to five years, all of a sudden, okay, this person's a five year, oh, no, no, he's a one-year one. No, next year's gonna be three years. That gets really confusing.
Well, it's, we're, I'm just saying, three to five years is like, we're somewhere in there. We haven't determined yet, but I can at least tell the board that.
What's the cadence of East Lansing?
Um, it depends on what tier they are. So they do the whole, like, if you're this many units, then you're expected like this.
It's like seven.
Well, they got a couple of that's applying.
So they have six.
Yeah, and a couple of those are grandfathered in, that they don't apply to new people.
Hmm, and some of them are like just minor nuances as well, like, that are very similar.
What, what, what is the grandfather?
Well, what they are is that there's two. They're considered non-legal, non-conformities, and there's, um, authorizing the rent with the owner's residence to two or more people. Any owner's residence, so in other words, it.
That's like the roommate situation.
Yeah, so that, that's grandfathered in, but going forward is not. And the, the other one is, uh, renting the space in which the owner does not live to three or more people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of them grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Existed before.
Our, just so you know, like, I guess our intent was to write this as a regulatory ordinance and not as a zoning ordinance. That way, we wouldn't have to mess around with grandfather versus non-grandfather. Our intent was not to regulate functional families or roommates at this point. But I can only get this out of your point. Oh, but that, I think, gives me enough to go to the board, like, the planning commission consensus, or I'm thinking right now, given, you know, no real deep dive into this, at least is regulating all the long-term rentals, thirty days and longer. So that's from a single-family home, that's the second property all the way to the villages of the world, which is like, the village has four hundred long units.
Oh, yeah, I think.
Yeah. Um.
I think those should be every year.
Yeah, and then all I'll say to the board in terms of how we're gonna regulate them is like, that has been undetermined. There, that is a very nuanced conversation that needs to be had. We can do everything from standards across the board to class systems, you know, so it, we can get as detailed as we want that. But right now, the consensus is there will be an initial inspection. Um, and there will be full inspections after that, and of course, a complaint coming in supersedes all of that. We're, we're at least in line of all of that, which I think is pretty good. Okay.
Just help me with, so a rooming house, if somebody were to set up a rooming house, would that come under this?
What is a rooming house?
Where you have more than three non-related people living in a home.
Okay.
That they're renting a room.
So I'm, I'm in a four-bedroom house.
And you rent out.
And I have one room and they have the other three.
Yeah.
I think that could and does meet our current definition of a functional family. So if we.
No, no, but the property owner doesn't live there, right?
No, the property owner lives there.
Oh, okay.
It's a property owner lives there. And it's their principle that will meet our definition. Now, again, we get into nuance of this and we say, like, once you get over so many number of roommates, we're starting to treat that as a rental, then that's something we would have to define.
There's cooperative housing down by MSU in East Lansing where a property owner could live there, but then have twelve separate rooms.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and Lansing has the rooming house rules that I would suggest we look at. Because that, I, I attended that housing thing and they've got a fairly good structure on rooming houses. Um, and rooming houses versus the roommate situation.
Yeah. So we would just have to define them. But again, that's one of those nuanced things that we're gonna have to think about, cause I would say, like, every situation you guys can think of, we should try to hash out in the ordinance, because if you can think of it, it exists. And it probably exists in Bad Township. That, Bad Township is a pretty dynamic place. I mean, there's a lot of different areas in Bad Township that are almost like their own individual areas.
We'll, we'll look at the fraudulent complaints also.
Yeah, I think that, we talked about that. That was smart. If somebody is just like, got a vendetta against our landlord and wastes a bunch of staff time, then the cost of that should be on them.
I think landlords would like that too.
Yeah, it would help sell it to landlords, yeah.
If you were to implement that, how would you collect it?
We would find a complaint. And then, let's say, like, they don't pay, like, do I go, I'm just not gonna pay it?
Collection.
Yeah, we'd have to think about that.
Or put it on.
Yeah, cause you can't put it on the.
Typically, we would put it on the property tax, but they're not paying property taxes.
They're not paying property taxes.
Yeah, so we'd have to, that would have to be something we'd have to see how our municipalities do it.
Yeah, I mean, some of them do it like somewhat to how they do parking tickets, like, they'll just send it to collections or however they go about it.
So, yeah. I mean, we'll get what it sounded like. What, what community was doing that? Uh, was it Meridian?
Nope.
Marquette.
Marquette. So, yeah, and we could reach out to Marquette and just be like, hey, can you do this thing? We're interested in applying it to ordinance. How's it working out for you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate all the feedback and conversation. I know this is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a big one. I'm excited to write. I'll talk, we're gonna talk to Ryan, I think, this Friday about it and see if he'll let us go get on the board agenda, so. I'll let you guys know how that goes too. All right, temporary buildings. So this is the ordinance that we were looking at, um, to help us with, um, fit wheels, RVs, campers, people living in them. And it was funny, because I did see a CNBC um, report, like sixty minutes report over the weekend that says, uh, because of housing costs in the US, the average amount of blowing occurring in RVs and campers is skyrocketing in the US. I was like, this is so, it's just interesting that, you know, it, something we're talking about and we're seeing here in Bath locally. And now they're like doing national reporting on the trend. But, yeah, it is something we're dealing with. We're, right now, Roger, unfortunately, unfortunately, is dealing with a couple of these. Um, we introduced a couple of new, um, subsections, I guess you could call them here. We introduced a new definition in section three of what a temporary structure is, or it's currently no definition. This is just the introduction. Um, so I don't even necessarily need any feedback tonight, but people can always mark this up if they don't like this definition and, you know, email me a copy or send me a copy of the, your idea of the definition. I will see, I see Bray's got a bunch of notes, so we'll take.
Well, I just got questions, like, it says intended for occupancy placement or use. What does occupancy mean? You're not talking about a dwelling unit. You're talking about occupancy for an office, like a construction office or something like that? I mean, that's, I don't know what occupancy means, because it doesn't include dwelling. If you look at the definition of dwelling, that's not an occupancy.
Well, I guess we were thinking about occupancy as a word, as you would use it in the sense of dwelling.
Well, dwelling, if you, definitely in a dwelling, it's gotta be on a fixed foundation.
Well, that's why I guess we're trying to get at here, is these are not dwellings.
If you're living there, occupancy.
Yeah, occupancy, I, I take the word occupancy out. And then, and other things, a lot of the things can't be used for storage, okay? If somebody's building a a multi-unit apartment building and he wants to bring a, you know, how does he store equipment? Now, how does he store anything on that site without using some kind of a temporary trailer? This kind of prohibits it, I think.
Does that have an exception for?
Yeah, we have an exception.
Except for residential, except for a single-family home. Single-family home, you know.
Temporary ruins is an annual to construction work.
Yeah.
So B, B builds and it's.
But it also says you cannot use it for storage. Look at the next page. Such temporary structures shall be permitted for occupancy but prohibited for storage purposes.
Mm-hmm, you think we should take out the.
Well, how are they gonna store anything on the site?
I guess if it's incidental, so this is why I'm glad that we already talked about this. I guess if it's incidental to construction, we would be fine with the storage. What we didn't want to happen was it not be incidental to construction and the store is still occurring. So maybe we just need to be more clear on what our.
Especially if somebody's gonna, if somebody's working on a project, it's gonna be for two years. All of a sudden, he's storing stuff there for another project. Yeah, you know what?
Also, in my experience, and maybe we need to make this clear, if somebody is storing equipment for a construction site, typically it's in quad cons, shipping containers, some type of temporary facility like that. It's not typically like when you see with these larger construction sites, they have like the trailer that they drop. They're not storing, like, the skids are in that. The door's not big enough. It's in the shipping container. And I guess when we were talking about temporary structures as we define it here, maybe we need to exclude shipping containers from that.
Well, I think for, for a big project, all of a sudden, they get a delivery. They get delivered all the plumbing fixtures. Where are they gonna store it? If they can't put it in the building, they're building.
Well, they would, they would probably build, yeah, I think we need, probably the cleanest way to do it, because if we build, oh, the shipping container carve out in the definition, then people will be like loophole.
Yeah.
So probably the cleanest way to do it is just say, storage and incidental to construction is permitted.
Some, some people have businesses.
And then I think we need to define what occupancy, what they mean by occupancy. Cause I think these things, what we're trying to prohibit is somebody living in these things.
When we say occupancy, that's what we mean, is people occupying it for the purpose of dwelling.
So.
I think a temporary structure should be used for that.
No, temporary structure should be used for short-term occupancy, or not designed for permanent occupancy.
Right. In short terms, we're gonna define what short term is.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to qualify that word occupancy with long-term occupancy and short-term occupancy. Would that satisfy?
Long-term occupancy is a dwelling unit, which is governed by a fixed foundation. According to our definitions, we've got already.
Do you have any definition of occupancy anywhere, anywhere else?
I don't know.
In any other.
I don't want it to be different.
Now, Serna Cook is EBA again. So as far as a zoning ordinance goes, no, we do not.
And then what you say, placement or use? I don't know what that is.
Sure is defined in the state building code, though, occupancy, which is probably the definition we would default to.
Anyway, the second two words, placement or use, I mean, if you just take out the word occupancy, it's a structure designed for placement or use.
Okay.
Placement or use of what?
I mean, that's a fair point.
And just in that, late in that paragraph, you referenced section six oh five. I looked that up. Six oh five is in the D development district. We gotta, we gotta include more than just D development district, I would assume.
Yeah, agreed. Agreed, I'm not sure why. I'm sure there was a reason at the time that we thought about.
I can't remember.
And then B, where it says temporary buildings and structures incidental construction, incidental to construction work, except single-family residences. What are we trying to do there?
I think what, so that obviously is in black text, so we didn't write that part. But I think the intent there is a single-family construction site, just by its nature, isn't rising to the scale of a commercial site. And there's no reason to have a work trailer on a single-family home.
You know.
Which I think is probably valid.
Under A, you changed fire to an act of God.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we do sense a little bit more inclusive.
Yeah, that was, when he got that, that was one of the things we wanted to ask you guys. The only reason we use act of God at all to like bring it to you tonight, and we're looking for a better option. So we're open to whatever. The only reason we use this is because that's what's in a lot of the regulations at the state level. And that's what's currently in all the assessing doctrine for when they're able to do an exemption. It's literally like in states that have act of God situation.
Yeah, so I mean, that's inclusive, like any sort of natural disaster, right?
Yeah.
I mean, while we have had the privilege of not having structures damaged in states of war that are not an act of God. It's always a possibility, right?
Yeah, it's always possible.
Or a terroristic event.
Yeah.
And I feel like, you know, that would qualify as under, you know, this ordinance, someone should be able to rebuild the place.
Yeah, we were trying to think of a better term, so.
Something like a demure, there's a weird French term that is inclusive of both natural disasters as well as uncontrollable man-made.
Yeah, like any crazy situation, like unforeseen externality. Which, I mean, that's not even bad, like unforeseen externality.
Something, I was gonna say, you say, I can drive.
Anything crazy, I think that works.
Dressing is, what are arson, is that an act of God? No, it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
So that's.
Well, could be an act of God. Arson's a good one, cause like that has and will happen in the future in the township of Bath.
Hey, cut, going back to E.
Okay, well, we'll try to think of something better. If you know, if you think of that French term, send it to us.
In E, I think I know what you're trying to say there. You're talking about a RV can be, can be brought in by a friend or something like that. And sitting near your property for thirty days consecutively.
That was the carve-out we were trying to do, because like, I think, when we had this discussion with you guys, we were like, well, we all. Buy what we have right now before doing anything, technically that's also not allowed. And if we do want it to be allowed, which I think everyone was in agreement, it should be. We were like, oh, we should build a carve-out.
I don't have a problem with that. The question, it says that you can have no more than two events per year. We need to see how long a gap is gonna be between these two events. Otherwise I'll move for a day and stick it back in there and be there for sixty days.
Yeah, but then, yeah, but then it's there for sixty days and your events are taken up.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the intent of this.
So you don't, you don't want your in-laws coming up and staying on your thing for the summer?
I mean, by this ordinance, no, that when the whole summer won't be permitted. And again, if that's something we do want, that's something that can be permitted here, but we just need to raise that bar to permit it.
But I guess the thing is, if we're gonna allow two occurrences with only a day in between, why don't you just say sixty days and be done with it?
One occurrence of sixty days.
But I think thirty days is enough period, but.
The inclusion of a, that, in that first sentence, may permit the parking of an occupied recreation vehicle. Does that presume that it's owned by someone else? And that the restriction of two thirty-day periods only applies to a recreation vehicle owned by someone else? And not to a recreation vehicle owned by the property owner?
Of a guest or visitor.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So I, I think I've just taken out, taken out that first part of, you know, may permit. And just say, just make it generalize in terms of a fifth wheeler, whoever owns it. Can be used by a guest or visitor, you know, for two thirty-day periods within a three hundred, within a three hundred and sixty-five day period of time.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, cause we gotta know that, what if you just have an RV parked and it's like no one's using it? Yeah, which is, you're allowed to have an RV on your property. The problem is, is like when somebody's living in it.
Occupied.
All right, I have force majeure. Force majeure.
Force majeure.
Shall include but not limited to acts of God, natural disasters, fire, flood, war, terrorism, civil disturbance, arson, sabotage, or any cause. Beyond the reasonable control of the municipality or affected parties.
How would you spell that?
Force. Force, and then M-A-J-E-U-R-E, a force majeure event.
That's probably a good thing to use.
We will use that and we'll just.
Definition.
It says it's a broad legally recognized term.
Okay.
Okay, can you use AI for that?
I did.
Hey, that's good enough for me.
I wanna say a joke, but I can't.
That's good enough for me. Okay, well, that's a good point, Jason, good catch. Alright, any thoughts on F or G? I don't think we've heard anything about F or G yet. I'm seeing a period that needs to be removed on F.
Means superior force.
So this would not, this would not include somebody that's sitting trailer with a lot more.
So in G, when you say long-term use, is that defined someplace else? Cause we're saying long-term use of temporary structures is expressly prohibited.
Yeah, you're right. We probably shouldn't define what long-term use means. Long-term use to us, I think what it means is longer than what we're spelling out here. So whatever we, I guess, we'll get a definition in play for long-term use. But that definition's gonna be dependent on where the planning commission ultimately, and ultimately determines they wanna save for E. I don't know if that's sixty, was one sixty-day period or? Cause if, if temporary uses says sixty-day period, or if temporary uses two thirty-day periods. So on the first, the long-term use is sixty-one days plus. Or long-term use is thirty-one days plus in the second scenario.
Cause I'm thinking of cases where somebody owns an RV and their house burns down. So they can rebuild their house. Instead of going to rent something, they just set their RV up on their property.
And that's covered by the force majeure carve-out.
But that, I mean, there's a ninety-day limit, right, to that?
Well, there is right now, but we think that is insane. And I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up, because we don't have it marked here, but that was on our radar. And I don't know, maybe we're saying, maybe it's in the copy we have in the office and not in here. But we're like, we gotta change that, because no house can be built in ninety days.
Another thing we talked about also was, even though it says ninety days there, if you go under to the next one, I believe it is. It talks about getting an exemption from the ZBA.
Oh, yeah, it does.
So if it takes longer than that, you could also go to the ZBA.
So, so going down to, I think it's GRH, where there's a piece on continuous progress. We'll have to define that, cause, I mean, delays in receiving construction materials, does that count as continuous progress? I mean, and people, how long can people play that out?
Yeah, that's why I, right out of the gate, I'd be fine, and this is my thought, what, just so we can get direction on what to do about this ninety-day one with you guys. Since we're here, um, I think six months is like totally appropriate. A hundred and eighty days, six months.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of a host in DuWitt that's been under remodeling for six years.
Yeah.
It's still not finished.
Well, I remember with, and again, I won't, I won't put any names out there, but just like the two recent ones where like a, a situation happened. I think one was arson-related and one was vehicle-house related, vehicle-in-house related. The insure, yeah, the insurance, you know what I'm talking about, the no-names. Uh, an insurance company, uh, just, I mean, they were a year with the insurance company before they even got the funds to be able to start the project. So I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine with defaulting to six. Because if it is truly like a natural scenario, then usually the insurance company is quicker, because it's like a tornado, it's pretty kind of dry. Um, so they're quicker to move on. I'm with six months and still having to carve out for the ZBA. So if it is like an arson situation that needs to be investigated, just go to the ZBA. Hey, six months ain't gonna cut it, like the investigation for the arson is gonna take every bit of that. Can I give an extension to two years? No problem.
What's the cost on a ZBA?
We get there these days, um, like in terms of like how much you have to pay to get the ZBA to phase? I mean, it's four hundred and fifty bucks, but in theory, your insurance company, you should get back paid for that expense.
Could we just create this as an administrative approval process?
You could create as administrative approval. You could say, um, we could do a carve-out and say, we do that somewhere for site, site plan approvals. We just say if you need a one-year extension that can be administered, we approved. Anything beyond that, you have to go to the ZBA. And then they have a year and a half.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Fifteen dollars fee or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that sounds good. That's a good call. Cause I mean, that's what we do with site plans. If you need a six-month extension, which the gas station needed, um, so they just did administrative request for a six-month extension. If they need more than that, they'll have to come back to you guys to do a one-year extension. Okay, or than that though, in that period that I'm seeing here in F, that sounded all right. We need to define long-term in G, which is fair. We'll, we'll get a definition on paper, but again, it'll be subject to where you guys ultimately land on E.
So, there's, for G, the temporary structures that's being referred to, is that temporary structures for occupancy or any temporary structure?
It says as dwelling units.
Oh, as, okay.
Dwelling structures.
Got it, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so we're referring to temporary structure as defined here, but then people using the temporary structure as not intended in this definition as a dwelling unit. And that is expressed or prohibited.
Could we use the term temporary dwelling structure to just be clear? Or does that just add?
We would have to add another definition of what we mean by temporary dwelling structure, which we would say that is an RV that's trying, that is.
Well, isn't that what the definition up above?
Well, this says it's an RV, but what we mean is, so we're defining, these are temporary structures, which a temporary structure includes an RV once that word dwelling comes into play. Cause we're saying does not constitute to meet the standard as a permanent dwelling. So then I guess we're just trying to make it abundantly clear to the layperson and reiterate ourselves here. And say, this thing that we already defined up here, and we said, and we, in our definition said. Does not meet the standard of a permanent dwelling that you are using or attempting to use as a dwelling. Which dwelling is something that is defined in the ordinance, um, is expressed and prohibited.
So this is.
That's the one that like our legal counsel would like, because if we find somebody and they were like, and again, if, if they are using RV as a permanent dwelling, it's gotta be like abundantly obvious.
So I, I guess, in this, I, I, I'm, when it comes to sort of, if, when you add definitions to the definitions page, right? You're gonna have two definitions that are temporary structure, right? Cause you're, you're gonna have a definition here that's temporary structure, and then you do the dwelling overlay on top of that, right?
I think that's not my intent, right? I would like to just keep it, um, temporary structures. And then I would like to add the definition dwelling, and that's what we do.
So you'll have two different definitions?
We'll have two different definitions, and then in this sentence, what we're saying is temporary structures as dwelling structures. So this one thing, so thing A, as, or you know, maybe we need, maybe this word as is the problematic word. So thing A attempting to be thing B, which is defined, is not prohibited.
So, just.
Or is prohibited.
Our initial confusion with the definition at the top. I think can be clarified by having two separate definitions.
Okay.
One is just a reminder what a temporary, what a temporary structure is, and the second dwelling use, right?
We have a definition dwelling.
We do.
Now, the different, difference between a temporary structure and dwelling is it doesn't include the RV. Those types of elements, right?
RV, a fifth wheel, none of those would meet the definition of dwelling, because dwelling's probably one of our more built-out definitions.
So what I'm wondering is the introduction of terminology that is a temporary dwelling structure.
That might be cleaner, I could, I could get there, like if you said like, alright, so we should do temporary structures. RVs, fifth wheels, blah, 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 these are all examples of temporary structures. And then we'd have another definition that said temporary dwelling structures.
Cause temporary structures is broader than just RVs and stuff like that, right?
Because if you drop a shipping container, it's a temporary structure and they are living in it. You don't want that.
You don't want that, no.
Hence the dwelling.
Hence the, why you need the second one. So I, I can get there, like. So you'd say temporary structures, these are these things, and then we'd have a second definition that says temporary dwelling structures. These are, have many similarities with the definition you saw, but there's this latter property using it or attempting to use it as a dwelling. And then we can say down here, that thing that we just described as a temporary dwelling structure, that thing's prohibited.
Am I just too far in the weeds here?
No, I don't think you are, because, because that's the problem with having this definition to start with, where it says temporary structure used for occupancy.
But is occupancy that's troubling you?
Yeah, it is.
But occupancy wouldn't trouble you, would, we maybe need to define occupancy as defined in the state of Michigan voting code. But occupancy wouldn't trouble you if it was inserted into the definition of a temporary dwelling structure?
Well, I think, you know, occupancy can mean a lot of things. It could be, it could be for a larger, larger construction project, it could be their construction office. They're occupying that for that, but not for dwelling.
Yes, but occupancy for a construction office will be permitted via B.
Unless they were dwelling in it.
Exactly, we don't want dwelling in, uh, construction. And that's why that is, that isn't incidental to construction. That's more in line with this new G we're gonna write, saying, no, that's this thing that we said you can't do.
Think it's good?
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and they, G, G I think is fine, except it says unless authorized by this ordinance. And I'm having a hard time finding in this ordinance where it says. RV can be a temporary dwelling.
Well, the act of God is.
There you go. That's why I made to put that in there. Cause it's authorized, it's carve-out. So if, if unless otherwise authorized, and the otherwise authorized is right there in A.
But.
You have to put that, because or else if you don't put that, then the two can't, they're in conflict with each other now. You have to make the carve-out. Cause you made the carve-out earlier. It's confusing when you make carve-outs, cause then you have like later accountability for it.
So could you move G to the, just that very top there? Oh, scroll up.
Okay.
Right there, under, just under that section fifteen point nineteen. Cause you, you say it can be allowed under the following conditions, but could you just amend that to say. This is explicitly, expressly prohibited outside of the following conditions. And then nothing, you don't have, you don't need G again.
Yeah, you don't need, yeah, that'd be another way to do it. I don't know.
You're gonna end up with this in front of the lawyers, so they're gonna pick A or B.
I, that's why, exactly, we are in the weeds a little bit. The weeds are gonna be important this one, cause I very, this is one where I could see this like going to court. And that's why I like G as a standalone, cause I do think it is just more clear. I, again, you have to build this caveat because A is there. But I like G as a standalone, and again, we can, I do take your point with the temporary dwelling structure and redefining all that, I think that's all wise.
Well, alright, let me continue to be a little bit nerdy here. I, if you read, read the header before A, right? It says, blah, 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 I are permitted only under, under the following conditions, right? And one of the conditions, G says this is expressly prohibited. Now.
Does it say that?
Pragmatically, it's the same, right? But it's just, it's cleaner language to basically say it's perhaps, in, in that leading thing, it's prohibited. With, outside of the following exemptions. Now, I'm not gonna die on this hill, I don't care, but.
I don't know, let us make all the, let us make all the changes that we got, I think, see if you like it and then we'll run the public hearing if it's still like confusing, which I think it might still be, but, but then we can come back and we can clean it up. It's a lot of changes, okay, that gives us direction, I don't need to go all over, okay.
And the ultimate goal is to have all three of these ready to go at one time to the board.
They don't, they do not have to go to the board at one time, you, but we're just gonna pull the public hearing, we'll get to one time. You can have a public hearing, you guys could vote on two of these and just keep on rolling. So don't worry, don't feel like you're forced into a vote next time.
But we want a public hearing for all three.
Yes, yeah, and then we'll check the box of a public hearing, one notice, save four hundred dollars.
I know somebody that has a large fifth wheel and they hook it up to water and electricity during the summer, they own it.
Okay.
And they use it for people that come and visit either relatives or friends during the summer periodically. So people stay in it for a week, they might stay in it for two weeks, then they, when another group might come. How are you gonna deal with that in this ordinance under the language you're using?
You only have two events.
Cause they're only allowed two events.
Yeah, by this ordinance, and that's, if, again, this body determines that that's not enough and there is a lot of seasonal activity that you would like to permit, like summer, then I'd say, dialed up to ninety days.
Well, I, I think what he's saying is, I, there's a concern about the number of events.
Yeah, I would say dialed up to ninety days and just say no, just ninety, ninety days out of the calendar year.
And just irrespective of.
Yeah, irrespective of events, just to get rid of the whole events part.
The only problem with that would be like someone in your predicament that lives in a, in a residential, tight residential area and they're parked right next to your.
Yeah, but then at least they're only there for ninety days, you know, like it's not a permanent situation.
Right.
Like, yeah, like I'm not stoked, I guess, that, like, let me see if it's my language now, cause we're talking about me personally, my life. But I'm not stoked that somebody six foot off, off my property line, like there's a family of five running around, my wife's probably pissed. But it's, they're only there for the summer, you know, and it's their property, you know.
Do these things that are parked, do they still have to like fall within the setbacks?
No, temporary structures don't.
Temporary structures don't, okay. So you can just park, you, you can park your RV like right on the property line?
Right on the property line. Yeah, cause you don't have to get a zoning permit for a temporary structure.
Well, it's a licensed vehicle, it's got a trailer license on it.
Mm-hmm, but yeah, it's not a permanent structure.
What if they didn't have a license on it?
Well, that sucks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, oh yeah, these are the things that we're talking about, I mean, it sucks right now, because people could do that right now and then I'd nothing, like they could, start putting hay bales around it and some pink, um, whatever foam stuff it's called, and then I think I would actually be like.
People have done that.
And again, if I, if they were in my situation where George is right, like the houses are pretty close on my street, if that happened, and I called them, let's say I'm not the planner, but I called the municipality and I say like, hey, like this is going on next to my house, like, and the municipal is like, yeah, it's not a problem, I think I would probably sell my house, like I'd probably move.
So, but don't we have the opportunity in this ordinance specifically to put in setbacks if, if a temporary structure is being used as a dwelling?
Yeah, even if it's temporary, yeah, you could say, yeah, if it's being used as a dwelling, even temporary, then all setbacks apply.
That probably sounds reasonable.
Unless you went before the zoning boards or make some, I mean, they might have a restricted area where they can't work on the house and do the setbacks at the same time.
Yeah, but then they would just go, just like anybody else that needs a deviation from zoning standards, you would have to, we only have to say that, that's inherently true. If you need a deviation from a standard, you have to go to the zoning board of people's.
And pay eight hundred and fifty bucks. Four hundred.
Four hundred bucks, yeah, well, hey, you wanna deviate. And again, that four hundred and fifty bucks, we're not making a dollar off that, that is mostly taxpayer and ZBDA cost, that's at cost.
Yeah, that's, that's like when you said you got all the permits from the apartment complexes, I'm thinking, I wonder how many trips they went out there and how much they actually, not, not much.
I think we lost money on that, I'm sure, I think we lost thousands on that.
Yeah, I'm sure you did. Well, I'm, I'm curious now, so couldn't someone park an RV off, off the street, like on the street?
So, now you get into, you get into the road commissions, all the rules.
Yeah, you're gonna get into a lot of the road commission rules there.
Okay, so on street parking is permitted, actually in a lot of streets in Bath Township, like let's say like on Slate Road, the road, no on street parking. And now it's not marked or signaled with that, but the road commission will enforce.
So what about main street?
The work with our police department, like one I remember for a while, there was a semi truck that was parking down by, um, BSNA. It, I think it was somebody living at Somerset and they were a truck driver for a living, they kept trying to park their vehicle there. Eventually, and that little turnaround is actually a public road there. The road commission was like, hey, enough's enough, like we've talked to this guy, he's not doing anything, Bath Township Police, we need to start rank parking tickets. And we started rank parking tickets.
You get the authority right, parking tickets?
The police do.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, but do we have any ordinance?
The road commission does.
Oh, the county road commission, okay.
They can enforce it.
Yeah, and they can, they have the authority to use our police department to print, to print and enforce it. Or if, if we refuse, I guess they have the county sheriff to.
Do we have any restrictions of where, where semis can park overnight and stuff?
We don't, no, we don't have any on street parking.
I'm not talking about on street. I'm thinking about, there, there's a place in Meridian Township that seemingly every time we drive by it, there was two semis parked in the Taco Bell parking lot.
Not the Taco Bell, or on, say, you know, they park in the old marathon, um.
I see that sometimes, yeah. Be a private property issue, we get the private property owners into that happening, you know.
They can't be complaining about it, cause that's been the situation for at least years.
Yeah, they could have them towed from the premises if they're sick of it.
Yeah, I think it's always the same trucks too, so it's not.
Okay, alright, well that gave us a lot of direction with this guy, so thanks, um, we'll get some back, no, it's public hearing next time, bring all three of these back.
Let's bring them back for the public hearing though.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay, so you good to move on with the report?
I'm good.
Okay, let's go.
Alright, um, so a couple, well, before I get into that, just wait before I forget, um, I was talking to the chair and it got pointed out to me that, um, next month, it looks like, uh.
Meetings on the.
Eleven is on Veterans Day, so our meeting is gonna get pushed that Wednesday. So we'll meet Wednesday at six o'clock next month, if that's okay with everybody. If that, if, yeah, if you check out your calendars, if it looks like that's not gonna be okay.
Yeah, let's make sure we got a quorum.
Let us know. Yeah, and if we don't, and if we're not gonna have a quorum, obviously me and the chair can reach out and let people know, okay, we don't think there's gonna be a quorum.
Right.
And we can adjust accordingly.
So be sure and let Miles or I or both of us know.
Okay.
If for some reason you don't feel you're gonna be able to make the meeting. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the town people will be open that Monday, we set Tuesday, something kind of like a random maybe closure. Um, okay, alright, so kind of announcement, I know everyone's been asking me about it, so, um, yeah, I wanted to let people know the survey is up, it is live right now, this is kind of like our big announcement to you guys, Kate kinda tried to spoil it at the.
Sorry.
But no, no, no worries there, um, we wanted to wait till today, so like the planning commission can kind of like hear it first. Um, the, we're gonna use tomorrow as our official kickoff, so we noticed and ran in the paper on Sunday. We're gonna make a Facebook post tomorrow saying like, hey, the, um, comp plan survey is live on the website, uh, for the comp plan, come check it out. We'll post it on our township page, or, you know, make the Facebook page post tomorrow. So tomorrow's kind of the first kickoff day, our intent is to have the survey live for forty five days right now. Now forty five days comes and goes and if we didn't get great response, then we can always push it in our fifteen or thirty days or whatever to try to get people to reply. But for now, forty five days is the window that we're seeking, um, we as staff have three events coming up that we're gonna kind of meet people where they're at, so we'll be at the farmer's market this Thursday, at a table with iPads and the whole thing. Uh, hotspots, printed out copies, see if anyone wants to take a survey. Um, we're gonna be at Trunk or Tree, we've worked with them, whereas that's the twenty third, and I, you guys are invited to pop by any of these events too. Um, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So we spent significant amount of time, uh, providing feedback that's by my estimate was not reflected in the current survey.
Oh, okay.
So, the.
You went through the current one?
I went through, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so things like, I, we had suggestions on redrawn the lines of where within the map, I, I.
I think I got it.
And so, because the lines didn't really reflect the demographics.
Yeah, so I, so A got combined into one big thing, B got moved, adjusted a little bit, uh, G became a thing. F moved this way and then E got, so, I mean, they moved them.
So one of the suggestions that we had was, I, I, moving them based on roads.
Yeah.
Uh, was problematic, and so, uh, Kate lives in, uh, Sector B, right? Which is gonna merge her and her family in with people who live in the village area, where in fact she probably is better fitting in Section A, given the rurality of where she lives, as, as one example, right?
I thought we had said to make that line extend off of the Herbison road line.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
And then gravel roads didn't include any of the changes that we had discussed.
I mean, I guess I made, I guess I made some misses, but, that's it.
Yeah.
They made their humans, they made some misses, but I, they made a bunch of changes. I mean, I don't know if it's perfect, again, I remember us having the conversation about Herbison too, we just snapped it to that line.
So, I mean, part of the reason for bringing it up is, I, it's, it's not outside the realm of possibility that they provided codes for a, an old version of the survey. And so just making sure that, that those, that that didn't happen, outside of this in terms of they use a judgment call in terms of how to do this, I'm totally fine with that.
I'll get with them tomorrow, and again, it could have just been like a Herbison to make it snap to that, just, it was hard for their GIS person to do, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we're talking about what, four households, right, that are not captured, so it's probably not that big a deal.
Well, the other thing with title too is splitting something along sixty nine, north and south of sixty nine. Because north of sixty nine is a lot different than south of sixty nine in a lot of places. I think in Area D includes north of sixty nine through the gravel pit and stuff like that, that's, not a lot of homes there, except that it does include, you know, it's all vacant property pretty much, so I guess it probably doesn't make much difference.
I know, I think they thought a lot, but I think they're probably assuming like a lot was talked about and a lot was suggested, and this is like the closest thing they could get to what made most people happy. And again, maybe there were small things like the Herbison thing that was.
Yeah, well, nothing's perfect.
You can adjust of where they are.
Yeah, I think the intention is good.
Yeah, there you go. That'd be fair.
That's fair.
Okay, alright, so I will check with them though, Jason, I'll see like, hey, can even, some of this.
I don't think it's, I think it's more important that we just move forward with the survey, get it done.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I can just be grumpy on my own time.
I know, now, now, you know, you're not, but everything you said was fair, like that's fair, like if you said something and it didn't change, like that's upsetting. Um, and that's bad, but, okay, so anyways, going back, so, I'm trying to go through the events just so you guys can pop by or be at them if you want to pop by or be at them.
Yes, please do.
And just so you know, like, we're not just sitting back and like trying to just let this thing happen, we're actively trying to get people to take it, so.
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market on Thursday, Trump or Tree, uh, the following Thursday, the twenty third, we're under the last, we strategically are the last table, cause we thought that'd be best for people like actually stopping.
Will you have candy?
We're gonna have candy.
That's the important thing at Trump or Tree, no one will stop.
We, we're thinking about trying to bribe people with large candy if they take the survey. I know that's ethical, but, whatever.
That's ethical, yeah.
And then. Yeah, a bunch of eight year olds.
Take it three times.
Um, and then on Sunday, the twenty sixth, um, we will be at Peacock Road Tree Farms, because the weather, you know, it's kind of around, at least in the long term forecast looks pretty good, and we thought that, um, that would be like peak pumpkin patch time and we could get a lot of people, so we've worked, worked with them and they've got us a good place where we can stay. So those are the three we got on our radar for right now, um.
Have you thought about the home football game on the twenty fourth?
We thought about sporting events.
Last one.
We thought about sporting events, do you think that people will be in a mindset?
Yep.
To take a survey?
If you gave them a little printed out card with the QR code, I think they would take it and probably sit and do it, especially before the game while they're waiting.
Or at least take it afterwards or whatever.
I think, I mean, and it's primarily Bath Township residents who are at that event.
Yeah, maybe we don't need to just set up a table, then maybe we just need to be there as people are coming in and passing out the QR codes.
Yeah.
And then we just get in volume, like, cause I, I, my thought was, I pictured us, I think that would actually be fun. I pictured us sitting at the table and people being like, just walking right by us.
Yeah, I think so.
But if we're passing out and then they are in the bleachers and they're just waiting for the game anyways, I think that, right?
Yeah, and candy wouldn't hurt, just kidding.
Oh, we'll try it. Get you a little slogan to say along with when you hand it out.
Yeah, but okay, that could, I'm fine with doing that, I'm fine with like, um, that's on the twenty fourth.
Yes.
So what about?
Township meeting time.
I'm sorry, what time is it?
Uh, kickoff is at seven, so I would get there, I would set up around six.
Okay, that's good work coming in, okay.
As people are coming in.
Yeah, maybe just run like six to seven, big one extra hour.
Yeah, I would six to seven thirty, and if, I can help with that if you want, it is senior night, so I'm a little busy for part of it, but not all of it.
No, it's fine, I mean, we want, we'll, we'll staff ourselves accordingly, and if you guys wanna be there and like have, even if it's like thirty minutes, you don't have to be the whole time we're there, that's fine with us, but we'd rather like have our plan and then wherever you guys participate, that's just extra.
So, other opportunities, I, uh, one of the tiles on the township websites, the, their main, uh, website, that would be a good spot for the link to the survey.
Yeah.
Uh, the electronic e-board out front, that is Eight Million Blue Mans, uh, would be another good, uh, notification source. Uh, weekly newsletter, what's that?
You love that word, it's our favorite.
It's not in compliance with the township ordinance.
I'm, I'm blaming the ministry, man, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a sticky one.
It's not sticky. It's not down to humans.
Government makes their own rules, government makes their own rules.
My department made up some calls, um, so, yeah, I'll talk with Taylor, like the website, Facebook, the sign, that's all Taylor, like, yeah, we're, I'm a.
Have, have a check the lights in, in Kessler's yard at night too. When you come to Channel Road, they blind you, shit.
Um.
Really bright.
Okay, yeah, so that's kind of what's going on with that, I mean, it sounds like it's not perfect and we'll take a, I, we'll take a look again. Dealing with consultants and like large amounts of feedback is always, we had the same problem, I think, with volumes of works still.
The fact that they should have is a pop up that pops up when people navigate to this website with a link to the survey.
What?
Here, when someone navigates here.
Yeah.
It's have a tile, it'll just have a pop up.
Okay, I mean, I'll talk to Taylor. I don't know what, I'm not the website person, I don't know what can and can't be done.
It's a new website.
It's.
Pop up for that.
Yeah, I mean, it will.
Should be able to.
What's that?
They should be able to, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna guarantee something, I don't know, but I'll, I'll ask her, that sounds like a good idea. Um, what else, um, department updates, um, we, our records person Brenda was on long term, her short, short term disability leave absence. Um, she's back, so we got kind of staffing in the records department, that's good, because we got a, um, we got a zoning variance request last week that Bobby had to read through, um, board minutes from the sixties all week to find the sentence he needed, so we could respond to the request. So, having a dedicated records person is always helpful, um, that's one thing that's going on, uh, the four unit thing, eh, the four, Gary Lane development, the four unit, unit Kessler one is currently under engineering review, um, the township engineer did find, you know, a number of things with the plans that they wanted cleaned up. Keps is on their second round of cleaning stuff up and now they're doing another review and so that will kind of go back. And so that will kind of go back and forth through the engineers for probably the foreseeable months. Think Mr. Kessler intended to get things moving before winter, but I don't know if that's gonna happen via the engineers timeline. And not just our engineers, I mean, Keps is very backed up too. I mean, everybody's using Keps in this area, so they're having. It's taking them weeks to respond to our stuff, so it's not all on the township. Like I said, the gas station requested an extension, so I don't know what that means in terms of the development starting before winter. However, as we've announced, I think here before, but it definitely had to board, they did apply full set of plans. Very thorough for a building permit, so to me that means they're all in. Those could not have been cheap plans to make then. So those have been approved at this point by the building department, so that's kind of exciting. Really no word on any of the storage, me and the chair were talking about that from Dimaxia or from the Cube Smart People. So that's been interesting. We've had more interest on Saginaw from a couple of parties recently. Mostly to do with that site where the current motel is operating, so.
Saw them saying so.
Yeah, so, but we haven't seen official application come in. It's just been kind of a lot of like, hey, what could we do here? Phone calls of even some architects coming in and showing us concepts and being like, is this doable? So, some stuff that's more built out, but again, no application, so. For me, I don't want even, you know, gain hope to anything till I've got an application by hand. Yeah, other than that, the department has been relatively quiet. I think in terms of permit numbers, we're in the nineties now. We talked about that earlier today. This same time last year, we were in the hundreds. So we're a little bit behind from where we were on zoning permits last year. In terms of building permits, we're a little bit behind as well. Let's say we're fifty to sixty permits behind where we were this point last year as well. So it's gonna be a lower permit year, I think. And when we do our annual report, which you guys see in January, you'll kind of see those charts on where we stand since it, since I started here in twenty twenty-one. Yeah, that's what's going on with the department.
I noticed that development on Main Street's coming along.
Yeah.
Drop down there last week.
That thing went up over, they got that print up in like one day. That was crazy.
Meadow Brook, the dirt work is all done. They laid down their first course of asphalt and curb.
Yeah.
So everything's marked.
Yep, all the in-the-ground utilities, I think, have been certified by the various utility authorities. So water, light, SCUMA, I think the next step is we will have to go for a construction review of that. And then once that's all approved, the PUD itself can be broken out. And then that's when we get to take it off our board in the back. We have a big board of every development process. And once the PUD is broken out, it's no longer in zoning's hands. It's off to the building department as each house gets constructed. So that's exciting. Yeah, any other department questions?
Kessler's development, what, what is that exactly? Is that a PUD or is that?
It went through as a PUD, is what it was when we got through.
Yeah, that's okay. So it's not site condo.
They're not, it's a PUD and it, but the structures themselves are going to be approved as condos. Similar to.
So they're gonna have to, they're gonna have a homeowner association then, they're gonna have that?
They'll have a condo association.
Yeah. Okay, what? I'd like to read their, their.
Their master deed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're having all kinds of problems with ours.
We still have, we still have the requirement prior to getting broken out as a PUD to get any copy of the master deed and have it reviewed by the township legally. Still a condition.
Just a couple of sections I'd like to read through and see what they did. I hope they're not using ours as a.
I wouldn't think so, cause you're H O A, so it will be different. If anything, it would be similar to the cottages.
That's not right either, but that's okay.
So.
But it's better than ours though.
Okay.
It has to do with common elements.
Yeah.
And limited common elements.
Well, I know that our council talked to their council about common elements, so that's a good sign. I don't.
Yeah, I hope so.
We'll see it and we're gonna review it, which I don't think is happening. I don't think we've ever had a condition to have to review their master deed. Which I know Kessler's not happy about that.
He had enough trouble with his lawyers.
Okay, that's all I got, guys. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any public, so let's go to Commissioner comments.
You will put Board of Trustees in the report.
Board of Trustees, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to bypass you.
Sorry. At our recent meeting, items that would perhaps be of interest to the Planning Commission would be that. We submitted our strategic plan, or the strategic plan was presented for review. The final draft was presented for review that has things like mission statement, goals, and then some timelines for implementation of some specific tasks to complete. Some of those would definitely be related to planning and zoning and whatnot. So that draft is available, what is it available? I suppose in the packet from the last board meeting. If you were curious about it, it would be available in there, at least an abbreviated copy of it is there. It's not totally finished. I think it probably will have still a few revisions that we'll go through at the next meeting when we talk about it a little bit more in depth. But we're in the final stages of completing that strategic plan process. We also accepted the CIP Capital Improvement Plan from the Planning Commission. The Board of Trustees did that. I don't think it was any different than last year though. With some notes about your suggestions for the water, the water runoff at Waswasser Park and some temporary fixes for that. That got some discussion and it sounds like some action from the DPW is taking that on in the short term.
Going in, will that's.
Yeah. We also had a really nice presentation about cemetery fees in the township for our two cemeteries that Allison and Miles presented at the last two meetings. They put together, like all of the plans and reports that we've gotten, I think the cemetery one was, was really well done. Also it laid out our situation, compared us to surrounding communities. One of the, some of the issues that we're having is space is limited. And fees were low, so then space was getting filled up pretty quickly. So how, how to manage that as well as continue to pay for maintenance of the cemetery going forward. Once it's all filled up, it still has to be maintained without new revenue coming in. So we, at our last meeting, approved a new fee schedule for cemetery plots. So if you're in the market, take, take a look. It is cheaper for residents than non-residents. What else? I think that was probably the majority of the items that were. Relevant to the Planning Commission. Unless I think I forgot anything.
Yeah, it was mostly fire related.
Yeah, we did spend a lot of time, there was an assessment of the fire department that was completed within the last six months or so. And the assessor gave his presentation, a summary of presentation of the fire department. And it was very thorough, very well done. I enjoyed his presentation in terms of that he just presented things in a really, I thought, proactive, useful. Forward-thinking way of these are some issues, these, these are also what is going well and this is what you should look at. And here are some, some short-term, some long-term potential solutions to act on going forward. Which coincides with starting with a brand-new fire chief, so I think the fire department's really heading in a much different direction currently than it was six or nine months ago. Much more positive trajectory.
Was the assessment in service of certification?
Say that again?
Was the assessment in service of certification or will there be some certification that will be issued by that organization at the assessment?
Or are you talking like, like OSHA or something like that?
No, there's, there's, I forget the name of it, but there's organizations, like national organizations that provide a certificate.
This was more of a private consultant type situation. Where we kind of tasked them with like, take, take a walk through, look at the facilities, talk to the people, look at the equipment. And then provide a report on where we are and where we need to be and how we might move toward getting there in the future. But this is more like of a private consultant firm that was hired. This was not like a municipal-type entity or something like that. Those things I think still happen, but that was not this.
There was some discussion years ago about one pathway for addressing some of the challenges with the police departments and go through a certification process. Which would include, you know, an inspection or an assessment.
Right. And I think going forward, and it's in the budget going forward, to do some similar things with the police department. As well as the, the entire township staff. More from a staffing perspective, kind of like, do we have too many employees? Do we have not enough employees? Are they doing the kinds of things that they should be doing? Like those kinds of things, just sort of a staffing assessment as well as a facilities assessment. As we are making plans going forward. Just, you know, if, if we don't have the right numbers and we don't have the right space, then what do we maybe need and how could we look at getting there? But I found, and the, the report's online, again, it's LinkedIn, or I think it might be, cause it's a pretty big file, it might be listed separately in the Board of Trustees packet. But I thought, I found it very interesting to read through. I know very little about fire departments and how they work. And it was written, I thought, so that anybody could understand what they're trying to communicate. But yeah, it was very fire department heavy, a lot of our discussion at the last meeting. We are getting into the budget season for the township, so if you're curious, take a look at those documents as they are released. I think there's, there are fewer money set aside for things like roads and things this year as, as part of just the normal process of that. But if you have input on those things, I think the Board of Trustees would definitely welcome hearing it. And I think that's it for me.
Does the township completely expended all its COVID funds?
The ARPA-type stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, that is, well, have we actually spent it? I don't know on that, but I know it's all been accounted for or earmarked. There were a couple workarounds, I think, that as a means of extending some projects past some of the predetermined deadlines. You could sort of shift some things around. So has it fully been spent? I don't know, but has it fully been accounted for? Yes.
Cause I, my understanding is that some of those ARPA funds were used for road projects. And so when we talk about, you know, the increases in road projects, I think it's important to be clear that, you know, those increases were not intended for permanent increases. I mean, I'd love to see permanent increases in the road.
Sure, yeah. Permanent increase in funding would also have to go along with it. And the state of Michigan has settled their budget, but I've heard nothing about how that impacts townships. I know I got a few frantic emails, right at the end, please contact your representatives. But I honestly, I've heard for schools, I've gotten lots of updates about how it's going to be impacting schools. But I haven't seen much about how it's gonna be impacting townships, which maybe is a good thing. And I don't, I don't know. If nothing crazy happened, but I don't know.
There, I mean, there's changes. The MTA did a good write-up on it, the Michigan Township Association. So, you know, you refer to them. It's nuanced. I didn't fully, I read through it, I didn't fully understand it myself. But it seems like constitutional revenue sharing is being diminished to townships. But then there are certain things that are replacing that. I don't know if that'll make us whole. It seems like on the whole, we are going to get less money.
Wasn't one of the things for schools that the retirement system was moving from one fund to a different fund? Foundational funds to per pupil allocation? And that was one of the big contentions for K-12. And then they moved university funding.
They'd like to do a lot of loophole money management through, yes.
So.
Yes.
That creates lack of stability for viability for retirement plans. I hate that. Something, I mean, I know as a township, we were looking at, you know, some revisions to retirement.
They have done.
Yes, we have done, I think really to everybody's now. The union and non-union employees have all set up some changes to their retirement accounts.
Some people are happy and some are unhappy.
Yeah, some people are, any change that's, there's always, you can't get something for nothing, so.
Yep. Anything else? Anybody got any questions for? Anybody got any comments they'd like to make? Everybody?
I appreciate your reports.
Ally's been doing a lot with like, really a lot of the credit goes to Ally.
I appreciated at the end of the, the rental report where you had the synopsis of what, where you guys are coming from. Cause, you know, I read through that whole thing and then I got to the end, I'm like, well, I, I like a lot, you know, I agreed with, you know, a lot of it. But I wanted, and it gave us some, gave me some, some type of direction in a sense a little bit. And I always appreciate everyone that spends so much time to go through stuff like Jason and Ray over there that, you know, find things that I wouldn't necessarily see.
Same.
And so I appreciate that.
But you guys don't find that annoying?
No, I, I like, I like to see things from, cause otherwise I'm standing on a hill, looking out through my eyes. And then I'm only seeing like, so when we look at a road and we were discussing, you know, should we have bump out or islands? And I'm like, no islands, because we gotta, we gotta maintain them, somebody's gotta pay for them, we gotta pay for somebody to maintain them. The road commission's gotta crawl around them. They always look nice for a couple of years and then they look like crap. Anywhere you go, you go to Myers parking lot or anywhere, you know? But I'm still looking through that until someone says, well, they slow down traffic or, or whatever, you know? So it's nice to hear the different points of view and to know sometimes I'm not standing alone, that someone sees it the way I see it. And I'm surprised sometimes by like, like that too. I'm like, no way that person said that. That's great, it's great. So I appreciate, you know, everybody at this table for sure.
Yeah, I think Ray and Jason alone have probably saved us ten thousand dollars in legal fees. Just by reviewing these documents to such a detail before the lawyers get them.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful.
We have not cost the township money.
Only if they paid, paid by the minute for the meetings.
I know we rely on it, I, this isn't my townie comment, but when we're writing this stuff, I mean, we're not like, yeah, we're a hundred percent sure this is the right call. We're like, this could be all right, we'll see what the PC thinks. And we are hoping you guys will play devil's advocate and like kind of pick it apart. And we eventually get to get ordinance.
Yep. So building off of the excellence of Allison's reports, I, I, I think it's important for us to recognize pre-Miles versus post-Miles. Or current Miles. The quality of the, the reports, the quality of the work is dramatically different from what the township has experienced in the past. I'm thinking long past, up to the point that you were hired.
Yep.
Maybe a few months after you hired to get on the run. But, you know, the, the work is consistently excellent. And, you know, while, you know, I nitpick and complain and get grumpy, you know, at the end of the day, or maybe at the end of the week. I'm always highly impressed with the, the work that's coming out of your department. And for Allison, you know, Miles is a, I don't know how he is like day to day in the office, maybe he's a jerk or something like that. But like, the precedent that he's setting, with the quality of the work that comes before us is phenomenal. Given his budget and staffing restraints.
The interns are huge for that because without the interns, like, and they always have been, like, obviously, I think Ally is like a particularly great intern out of like the interns on that. But like, you don't have time. A, if it's just like a one-person department, like just, you've been in the office, like the amount of phone calls, you cannot function and sit down and do four hours of research without being bothered like twenty-five times.
Right.
The interns allow research to happen and research is like critical for writing a good ordinance. So the intern, we're a Bath Township so lucky geography-wise because of our proximity to Michigan State that has a great urban planning program.
But it's also important to recognize that a great intern can do shitty work under a shitty authority.
That's true.
Well, yeah, that's very true.
I appreciate you saying that, but anyway.
So you create an opportunity for. So you create an opportunity for, uh, interns to thrive, and that, that is as, as important as a good intern.
Yeah, not, not everybody can be a good mentor.
I don't know.
And just historically, historically, the, the jobs.
Good or not, things are going a lot better now than they were, uh, when I first got here.
I, I think Miles is doing an excellent job because every one of our interns gets a job in a planning department when they leave. They don't get just a job pushing paper, making copies, they actually get planning jobs, so.
Yeah, so far, yeah, we've got a good success. We're wait, we're working on Bobby, so, but he's working. Yeah, but that's a, Bobby is with us full-time right now, right, he is, um. He's covering for building because we have somebody out, um, so he got moved into full-time, so he's. Half of his day he does planning stuff, or half of his day he does building stuff, so he's kind of seeing both sides right now, which I do think is helpful. But he's on an active job line now, so.
Yeah, tough, tough market.
It's always, it is a tough market right now, I think, and it's been kind of frustrating to all of us because we, planning is a kind of, it's a nice. Field to go into, at least for job hunting, because it's municipal jobs, you can see what everybody makes, it's all public. And so far, the typical job boards we look at, like, I'm seeing a lot of stuff that would be more applicable to like. Maybe like a person in my situation, but we're not seeing a lot of entry-level stuff this year, which has been frustrating. Yeah, and I'm wondering if that's having a real effect in the entry-level planning market.
I would, I'd anticipate it.
So, it's been there, he's, he's trying though, he's doing a good job with us, so I'm sure something will work out.
I hope so.
And with a lot of the interns too, like, they always, because Bobby's from the Dwyer area, so myself included, when I started looking for a job out of grad school. I'm like, alright, fifty-mile radius from Fenton, Michigan, and then that doesn't pan out, and then you just, that radius continues to grow. And then you work for Beth. Which is not a bad place to work, though.
Yeah.
And you realize it's not that far from Fenton.
It's forty-five, it's not a big deal. Alright, anyways.
Yeah, by, by any, but planning commission members that do have time though, if you can go to some of the public events, even if you're only there for a half an hour. I think it'd be real worthwhile, it's good for our experiences, good for the public to see us. And if you've got any suggestions of another place that you'd like to hold a public meeting, um, sure, bring it up. We might wanna do something down at the Creamery, they're having a weekend event.
Yeah, they're having, on Sunday, that's this, this Sunday.
I think it's this weekend, Saturday and Sunday.
Their fall festival.
Their fall festival, I think.
Is that, is this survey for non-residents, is there a clause, uh?
Yeah, non-residents can take it, and there's a question that qualifies, like, where you live or if you don't.
Right. So they can still participate in the survey, though.
Yeah, like, I know I took like Lanesburg and Woodhalls when they gave out the survey, just cause they're adjacent to us, and I visit those places and have an interest in them. Continuing to be nice.
For the Creamery thing, I mean, given it stays close, I mean.
It's close. If I'm around, someday I might print some stuff off and just drop it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I could just sit on their counter, I'm sure they'd let, just a little flyer.
They'd pass out, uh.
I'm just gonna see if we can get our, we've reached out to a mail shop, uh, last week, got a quote. Then get it back to us today. We got a bunch of quotes last week, we sure to have our postcards. The soonest we could get them was by the twenty-first, so. We might not have them by Sunday, but we might just, if it's a thing, we think a lot of people read there, we'll just print off, like, some, our flyer on just paper. I won't look this clean, but maybe I just drop them off one Sunday. Cause I'm, I'll be in time, I'll be around.
Yeah, I'll be around two months.
And again, like, if we, if forty-five days go by and we just couldn't hit enough events and we didn't get enough, we will just extend it fifteen days. We, we have a buffer in here. Our, again, our adoption goal is not till January of twenty twenty-seven. I will likely end up adopting before then, I think, on our timeline, but we, we have time if we need to build an extra thirty days in the survey.
Anything else? Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Her second?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
No.
Sorry. All those opposed, Stacy?
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Or none, we're adjourned.